So. Something all mowed out.
Hard wire. That's stopping, hard wire.
Uh, yeah.
I thought about that.
Didn't even know what they do in Texas, Constantine.
So I was.
Constantine. Didn't even know you talked about that.
About that one, because I got it after you did.
Mm-hmm.
Like even for him then, a day or so, I think when I had it.
Yeah. Yeah, I had to take it there now.
I did, I did the weekend for president, but.
That might start on the weekend and then that next day. Not a hundred percent, but by Sunday it probably was. It was beautiful, so I don't know what it was that were going around, but not good.
Yeah, I agree, I almost felt with a. Because now that they're getting to the point where they even like hurt, you know, from working all day, and they just. Hi, Kimberly.
Hey, how are you?
Good. Good. Oh, I got the chair.
Who do you like, you lady?
No.
They did, the X was having a sale, but they were having a sale. Office stand, she said, sell the chairs, and she said to check back in the fall.
Just get them from Amazon.
Let's get some hammocks.
Yeah.
Just relax.
I was curious.
Everyone is in.
Yeah.
I can't do my hammocks, sorry.
Oh, I can, I actually probably can't get out of one.
Especially if you're filming, I'm not doing it.
I probably can't get out of one, so that's not what I get.
You know, with your, your back.
You'll probably injure yourself trying to.
I just take it until the next meeting.
We call the evening minutes for you.
Yeah. I don't know, council members, I'd much appreciate it.
Much appreciated.
Recording in progress.
Please stand before the delegates.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seven o'clock, we'll call Jesse.
Ruben.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Bishop.
Here.
All right, call order at seven P M. The open meeting is act is on the south wall for your reading enjoyment. There is a copy of the city council packet, and the council chambers located on the counter, near the coffee meter. This needs to be left by the entrance per the open meeting act. Thank you. The city grant by, or we did that one. The mayor and the city council reserve the right to enter the closed session at any time during the meeting in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meeting Act, even though it may not be on the agenda. It is the intention of the mayor and the city council to take up items on the agenda in order presented, however, we reserve the right to take up matters in a different order to accommodate schedules of the city council members having. Uh, the city council further reserve the right to adjust the order of the items on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment may be limited to three minutes with a limit of two individuals speaking per topic position. Please come to the podium and clearly state name and address for the record and the agenda topic item you wish to speak upon. All right. Everyone get a chance to review the agenda.
Yes.
Move to accept the agenda for June eleventh, twenty twenty four, second. Kimberly moved and turned to second to accept the agenda for June eleventh, twenty twenty four. Any discussion? Andrea, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion care, very good. Review and action of prior meeting minutes, May twenty eight, twenty twenty four.
Can move to accept. May twenty eight, twenty four, meeting minutes and read the ratings.
Sorry.
Andrew moves, Sam second to accept the prior meeting minutes for May twenty eight, twenty twenty four, and away the reading. Any discussion? Jeremy, how do you vote?
I abstain.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Motion care. Communications, Derek Edward.
Just a second, sorry.
That's all right.
Um, absolutely, yes, so. Start with a few communications and then I'll do, uh, meeting updates here. Um, seems like this time of year ninety nine point nine percent of everything is parked and wrecked. Which is fine, we love the hot season. Um, ball season is, is, uh, going smoothly, about twelve games left this year, home games left this year. Um, we did have to warranty the wireless antennas for the new scoreboards, thankfully they were under warranty. So we have those issues resolved now. Uh, the new dugouts are complete minus the benches, they should be here around June sixteenth, somewhere around there. Um, if you noticed, our bench was missing out here, we did steal from where we could with the downtown benches down there, and honestly, I think they look great in those dugouts. And Vic, Vic was like, it's like an antiquey feel to them almost, so. But we do have actual benches coming for them. Um, we hosted the, uh, Oakley Memorial Tournament, uh, this year, and then we just finished hosting a two-day woodbat tournament.
Oh.
Uh, Oakley is your pony age kids, and then, uh, the woodbat is pony and peewee age, uh, kids. So that's, uh, Oakley is put on by Chris Friesick, and the woodbat tournament is hosted by Vic. He does all the coordination and everything, we just have, uh, concessions available for them.
Oh, very nice.
Um, which is great, because that takes a lot off of Brittany then, she doesn't have to plan that, so Vic does all the planning and scheduling and they have, they provide all their own umpires and everything.
Oh, nice.
Good.
Um, we just finished hosting our home swim meet. Um, I was not there, but from what I heard, it went very well. Um, and we found out that we will be hosting a state qualifying meet on July sixth, and Imperial is the host site for the championship this year.
No.
I was able to speak with the director of the High Plains Tsunami League, uh, Jeff, um, and he's hoping that they can alternate between east and west sites annually for the championship.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I said, well, we're, we want to crack at it, so, um, uh, and I think that's, he, he said, yeah, we, we, we've heard you loud and clear, so. Hopefully we get a crack at it in two years, because it'll go back east next year, I think you've been in Oxford, uh, prior to coming west, so.
Thank you, how many towns does that fill?
Um, oh, there'll be plus, there'll be one more than we had at the swim meet, so seven, I think, is what, what, uh, what, uh, Mrs. Hatchett will make.
Nice.
So, yeah, very, very good, and they would, I mean, they're done by twelve thirty. The kids go, can go get something to eat, doesn't delay opening of the pool. I mean, it ran very, very slowly, so I think they're gonna be able to start about a half an hour earlier, because of the time, July sixth will be, it'll be warmer.
Right.
Um, so, um, all right, uh, the pool hosted, yep, okay. Uh, so in contact with Sheldon, um, we're trying to set up the dates for crack sealing and patching as we normally do with Mr. Deesbruck. Flag day is on Friday, just a reminder there, we'll have flags out for that. Um, and if you notice, we did get our handicap, uh, sign posts. Uh, and Mr. Faber is working on getting the signs made for those stalls.
Okay.
With the, it's just a little easier to see if it's on, if it's on a corner rather than on the concrete, so.
Yeah.
Um, and, and as far as that goes, striping is in the works, we're, we're, uh, I told you we're working with a new individual, did not, was not impressed with the ones we hired last year, so. Um, he's hopeful to get to us, I gave him a timeline of before upgrade.
Good idea.
Um, so, uh, skater system, if you recall, we approved that. Um, I did message, um, Amos, uh, to get an update on that, and he said hopefully they'll be able to begin at the end of this month on updating our skater system. The skater system is what monitors our wells, our water tower, and our lift stations. Uh, it tells us how long they ran, which ones in the lead, it's our, it's the brains of the water and the lift station.
And then like if one is running too much, that'll alert you?
Yep, and it does an auto dialer, we work with, uh, Great Plains, or Prairie States Communications. Um, so if there's an alarm that gets set off on them, a high water alarm on the lift station, or high water alarm on the water tower, it does send out a real diameter to all the public works employees, and then ours as well. Um, the guys are working on some repairs at the band show, they did give the steps repaired to the band show, and um, I had contracted with Daniel Coney to paint the interior of the band show, uh, the white part, uh, before our army band comes on July twelfth.
Okay.
And so, so excited about hosting them. Um, okay, uh, we'll quickly hear tomorrow, the library board will meet, that is, uh, June twelfth, uh, at five fifteen, and we're at the library, five fifteen P M. Five fifteen P M, hoping it's an A M all at these times. Um, Jesse will be going to municipal financing, or sorry, I butchered that, Jesse. Municipal accounting and financing. School class, I butchered it, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Um, and she will be gone Thursday, Friday, Saturday, right, coming back Saturday.
No, I'll come back on Friday.
Come back on Friday. Um, and then that will take us to Tuesday, June eighteenth, and we will have our joint special meeting, uh, with the library at six P M in this room. We are closed in observance of Juneteenth on the nineteenth, and then I am at the Nebraska City Managers Annual Conference in York. The tree board will meet June twentieth at two P M. I will say that's still tentative right now, Mr. Forney was gonna get back to me, and he has again, so. But for now, it is, it is in the calendar for June twentieth at two P M. And then up to our next meeting, uh, city council on the twenty fifth at seven P M, I have that a second half right now.
What were the days you were done again?
Uh, the twentieth and twenty first.
Okay.
And we are, we are looking for another public works employee, so if you know someone, send them our way. Yeah. Uh, here are posted on all of the sites that we can post on, send the notice to Chief Downing, Free, Free Area Newspaper, ZimRecruiter, uh, Anyworks, uh, all of the above. I, anything that'll let me post the job, I post it, Facebook, I post it out, so.
Perfect. All right, thank you very much for that information. Andrew, do you have anything? Oh, yeah, it is seven ten, thank you. So let us go into the public hearing on the Bishop's subdivision preliminary plat, at seven ten, thank you so much for your help on that.
All right, uh, in your, in your packet, and I suppose if we would have got to the standing committee reports, we would have, we would have had one, Kim.
Yeah, good.
Um.
Well, not really, I gave it last time.
Right, right, but, uh, in your packet is the, uh, preliminary plat, um, I have included the big map that I showed you guys last time. It's on the back table, it's on the table as well. Uh, there was some minor revisions in there, um, they, they wanted, uh, Mr. Softley asked for an easement or an access easement.
Just, just a minute, um, Mr. One, would you please put the, the bind over here? Sorry. There's other people here that may want to review that. Thank you.
Uh, no, no worries, uh, yeah, so, Mr. Softley had many hats to wear that day, and, uh, he had his fire hat on for most of it, I think. Which is great, uh, we need that hat on, um, and he had asked us for an easement along the north side of the lot lines, uh, for emergency access, and the bishops arrived. Um, there was no issue there. I did receive notice after, um, after that meeting from Jason, if they were going to be able to make changes, they would like the Bishop Avenue removed, they don't want the street named after them, so uh, we're gonna go back to the original one from Mr. Poppy, Pearl Avenue. Um, no baby there, as well as removing the street, uh, utility, and changing it to a utility access easement on the E six.
Okay.
Uh, to the south of, uh, E seven there. Again, that is an emergency vehicle and utility easement access. Uh, and that's largely in place there because of existing trees and the, the desire to keep those existing trees, as they are in really good condition and beautiful, provide a nice break between those two properties there. Really, the only changes there were, were those two changes, were those changes that I submitted. Um, and then, and the rest of the files, you can see all the stuff I have to get in order to file the preliminary plat, the sewer, the water, the elevation, um, and then as well as I also included the fiber layout, uh, and the electrical layout. Elect, these will all be put on official, uh, map, Ryan did apologize, they've had some emergency locates that they were being caught up with, that they were not able to get our changes made, will not hold up the preliminary plat process at all. You can approve it tonight as, as presented, it will not, not, uh, cause a headcount, so.
I'm sorry that I put it and packed it upside down. It was in there and I just scanned it and I copied it the next day and.
That easement is forty feet, is that right? On the north side of?
Thirty plus the existing ten on the lot line, yes.
Total forty, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
I was also, uh, had a very nice conversation today with, um, Jeanne Bishop, who came in and she just wanted to say thank you for the progress, they're excited, they have a lot of people knocking on the doors, especially once they have Facebook, they're, they, and people say, hey, can you purchase a lot already? So that's, that's great, um, uh, we will open bids on June twentieth for the waters and sewer main, and there's an option for the asphalt paving. Uh, the electrical will be done through Midwest, telecommunications will be done through Great Plains, gas will be done through Black Hills, none of those are needed. Need to be did, um. So, and then I'm hoping the CRA can meet June twenty fifth, I don't have enough responses back yet for four or five. We have one more. Uh, they'll meet at noon, uh, to award it, and they'll, it doesn't come back to you because they aren't forward. They can award the issue on. So hopefully after we have that information, the construction estimates, uh, from the bids, we'll be able to start talking about, um, pricing. How much we, we think lots, um, can potentially sell for, so. That's, that's really just, she, she was, I had a very good meeting with her, was excited to be talking to her, and she, she was very pleased with the progress. Excited to actually do this, so.
Hi, Donna, you wanna come on up here and to the podium?
Well, I just wondered if they have a, a picture of the plat, uh, for the subdivision.
Oh, they're right behind you. Good question. Yep, I'm going to look. I don't know, did you have a question or you just wanted to look?
Right now, I'd like to.
Okay, go ahead and have a seat.
I can lift down the street, Ryan.
Right, right, go ahead. Phil, um, you wanna go ahead and come up to the podium and introduce yourself and so on?
I'm on the change, that's land. I guess I apologize, I'm looking at the plat, how far north does this go?
Uh, it is actually, the easement will take it to about forty feet, forty feet south of A Street.
So, grassland, you're gonna be farther south of the. What I mean?
None of that, that's a low spot, we're gonna keep it.
That's what I was saying, I know it's a little short.
Yep, a good question, thank you for bringing that in.
Did you guys have any questions?
Middle yard court, are those, um, the ones in the middle, are those quads, the one north of that, is that also a quad?
Uh, yes, so, uh, those three.
Those three are quads?
Those three are available for multi-family housing.
Okay.
That's all. Single, varmil.
That's the intention, is, is for a, a single level, and actually the size of those, we'd probably go as big as six with the single car garage.
But and with the base?
S- single, uh, no base.
Oh, okay, just a single block.
So we could have six families among those little sections?
Yes, I measured, I worked, I've, I've measured A's, yeah, uh, haven't, uh, or, I don't mention, we measured the size of those with the single car, we could fit six, a six flat, with, with six flats, with a single car garage on each of those lots.
Okay, so that's potential for eighteen families right there. So with the bishops being twelve, that was us at.
Huh?
Thirty families?
Well, we're already seventeen without being counting those, so that was twenty nine, and then plus another eighteen. Um. And then I had forty, no, so fifty in there.
Oh, with bishops?
Yeah, with bishops.
Yeah, with bishops. Families, AKA homes.
Well, yeah.
Times, times residents, so.
Now, if they had a forced contract.
Forty seven. Forty, basically.
Forty seven.
Forty seven.
One of the taxpayers completely sewer the water. Is that then the discussion?
That's what we're doing, that's what we're doing next, is we're bidding for the sewer and the water, yes.
We're on the terminal, it's like that.
Yeah.
Do I?
We're at the terminal, that's, yeah, because we don't have the vision, so.
That's going, uh, we need that by itself, so Bishop and I could put our own sewer and water. We do the mains, you'll, they'll do it from the main to the house.
I'm sorry, yes, so we'll, we'll put the main in, and whoever buys the lot will put their service line into their house from the sewer main, and from the water main, yes.
Did you guys have any question?
So she was curious on the, on the water main and the sewer main, so we'll, we'll put the sewer main and the water main in, and then the homeowner, or whoever buys the property will be responsible for connection to the sewer and to the water, to the mains.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good question.
Would, would that really come up to that?
Now, where, where is your interest to into this subdivision?
So two entrances here off of Fourth Street.
Off of what?
Fourth Street, so you've got the grade school, you've got Nobulocks, and then Carl Lakes is right here. So either off of Fourth Street or off of Eighth Street, and Elm.
Okay, now, off of Elm, what, where's the, uh, exit from Elm into it?
Right here. So you come down Elm?
Cause I live in Elm.
Yep. You come down Elm, and then you return, and then you're in the property there. Or you could come from Eighth Street and turn right.
And Seventh will be open too.
And that's where Eighth Street's mine just south of me, you know, so.
Right, and then you'll have a cross street here with Seventh, and they'll be able to come from Seventh straightaway too.
Okay, and how deep, how, how deep are these?
Um, this is Mr. Bishop's property, um, and that particular one is one point, one and a half acres.
So this is, he still owns property here?
Yeah, see, he, he's going to continue to own all of the property, he's just allowing us to bring the utility, the water main and the sewer main through his property to get to ours.
And it's tipable, so we are able to gain, or, from the tip, then to help pay for utilities.
It's deferred taxes, so we have up to fifteen years to defer a certain amount of taxes to recoup what it costs us to build the utilities. So, the, the big thing here was by allowing us to come from, from, uh, so there, right here at the corner of Elm and Eighth, there's a water main and a sewer main, and by coming this direction, it's gonna save us almost forty thousand dollars rather than bringing the utilities down Fourth Street. So that was a big push to get, uh, utilities coming through Mr. Bishop's property. I'm gonna slide this up here, I'll show you the break, he actually, everything, sorry, everything above the pin is Mr. Bishop's, and everything below the pin is the, the community redevelopment authority, the CRA.
Now, do you have a smaller map of this yet, or it's just this size?
I have a smaller map, yeah, actually, I'm here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Because, as you know, I did twenty eight years of research, so I know what's, uh, what's there.
You're, you're welcome to that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I decided I'd just ask questions ahead of time and.
Come ask questions, that's what the public hearing is for.
Mm-hmm.
Question time.
Ben, did you have any more questions?
I do, I'm gonna wait.
Yeah, cause this is just the first of yours.
I'll, I'll talk with the others, no, uh, just to get things cleared up here. I guess the main thing is, the street it goes by, Gardner's, that's not gonna be affected, is it?
No.
Okay.
Well, Gardner Way, that's across the street from me.
Right.
Right. Do you have any questions, Molly?
Thank you.
You want? Let's see, how long it's been? Thirteen minutes? Yeah, almost, we've got two more minutes. Right.
You can also count on us, it's fifteen minutes, so we'll try to stick to the pressing we've already set.
Yeah, yeah. What about you guys, any, any questions or concerns?
I'm really excited to be able to do it, it took a lot of work, it's been two years of, it's amazing how long it takes to get all this stuff kind of done, but and I think it's really cool that we are able to do it with, with a private developer, I think a lot of cities would not do that, so we're able to work together save a lot of money and save the taxpayer a lot of money by coming in north.
Yeah.
And it's in the one need that has been communicated from the citizens of the community, like, that's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, number one.
No matter how many surveys have been done over the last ten years, it's number one.
Has it been longer than that?
Well, this is.
Yes, at least ten that I've been keeping, keeping track of from every forum has been housing, so.
And we know that there's a, we know that there's a need, I mean, Imperial's built two, two additions, and again, I don't like to compare to those communities because they're not comparable to us. Yes, there are neighbors, but they have a much larger tax base than we do.
Right.
Um, but for instance, Trenton, who has a much smaller tax base than we do, um, they're flourishing, they've, they've just built a brand new addition out of the, out of Swanson Lake, and, and it's going like gangbusters, Kevin. out of Swanson Lake, and and it's going like gangbusters, Kevin Bobby said.
Yeah.
Uh, we know that with the incoming Western Sky, we need someone, somewhere for those employees to go, we need somewhere for our teachers to go. Ogallala's gonna get a casino, plain and simple, it's actually Racino, I think is what they called it in the newspaper.
Oh, there, so it's official, okay.
It's it's gonna happen, um, the opening and die timeline, I've yet to be determined, but we, I would like to capture the fallout from that, you know, and and the people who disagree with that being in Ogallala, come on down the, come on down the drain.
We got a lot of sixty-eight plates in the hospital parking lot.
Yeah, and and obviously, we know if you take a cruise through the hospital, it's not seventy-four up there that's predominant. Um, it's all the other, it's all the outline communities that's predominant up there, so if we, if we can be dirt ready with infrastructure, sewer main, water main, electric fiber, telecommunications, gas, and just have a lot ready for someone to come in and then work on rural workforce housing and actually building some properties, there's a developer, um, in Imperial right now that is excited about us doing this cause that means he gets to stay in the area, they're out of Texas, but they're from the area. Um, and there's, yeah, so I'm I'm hoping that just by having dirt lots for sale, infrastructure ready, dirt lots for sale, we can capture some of this boom. Kimmy hit the nail on the head there, we, it's every survey you've ever asked in the last umpteen years, it's been, when do we get housing? We're we're no longer dragging our feet, we're we're gonna make this happen, and and there's gonna be new housing available in Grant.
Yep, well, I had, I I went to quilt retreat in Colorado a couple months ago, and one of the ladies there wants to get out of the front range and was looking at houses in Grant, Imperial, and Hoyoke. And she and she eliminated Ogallala, I don't know what reason, but she did, and, you know, right there, had we had housing, I, you know, you know, and and she has quite the chunk to plop down, had we been ready, you know, she would be moving here, yep.
And I have a, I have an insider there too, with, Jeannie Dice likes to give me reports from from the front range and from her travels, and she said, there's just an overwhelming amount of people people from California who have just tore up the front range, and it's no longer the beauty that it once was with the mountain backdrop, so, yeah, we we don't have all the legalization that Colorado does, but that's a good thing too.
Yep, yep, so some some good examples of of why we're doing that during this, it was started before us, obviously, um, so we're glad we can continue that work. Yep. All right, does our public have any more questions or comment? This is a good place to to put them, cause we're all together, so we can talk to it all at the same time.
I think North Platte's gonna get it before Ogallala.
I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna correct Phil, he sees my elder, but North Platte turned it down.
I know.
At their last, yep, within the last two or three meetings, they turned it down. Because of, uh, sustainable beef, and because of what they're doing downtown with the District One Center.
And one other question, then, um, what's affordable, I mean, what's gonna be the price of these houses, are people gonna be able to afford them? I guess that's my my question.
That's yet yet to be seen, I mean, I, like I said, if we can just have, um, dirt lots for sale, I think that's the biggest part, affordable lots for sale, that's the biggest part, now whether the house itself is actually affordable, I can't control.
Yeah.
Um, I will tell you right now that that it's not, I mean, we can't afford to build a four and a thousand dollar home and live in it. But but I I think the interest rates aren't going anywhere, we got blessed a while back with two and three percent interest rates, and we won't see those for a while again, so. But, yeah, affordability will be key if anyone can actually build a home.
All right, it is now seven twenty-nine, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Thank you for participating. And we will go up to standing committee reports, Andrea.
Cemetery met tonight, there was really just two pass bills and claims, Phil.
Okay, very good. Kimberly?
Um, nothing new from the last meeting.
Okay, Tierney?
Nothing.
And Steph?
No.
All right, perfect. Um, we did have enforcement shift and water reports.
Uh, ma'am mayor, I did forget to mention, and I apologize for my communications of public swim lessons, I have on my calendar, I'm looking at that. I'm going on this list, I think I said she has eleven.
Or more.
Or more, there were some walk-ins, you had eleven pre-registered, I mean, there's always some walk-ins, so, but that is this week, and then the second one, we're shooting for on the second week in July, um, the eighth through the twelfth, but that's tentative right now, so hopefully nail that down soon.
No, it was the twenty-second. It's not easy to.
Yes, sorry, we're doing it after fair, that's why.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for the update. All right, enforcement shift and water reports. All right, wanna please note that we accept them as presented? Any financials?
They're in process, and we'll have them to review at the next meeting.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Any any public comments, go ahead and join us up at the podium and and state your.
A couple items here, Phil called him to live at Tangeress Land. As we know, the Fourth of July is coming up, and our streets look raggy. There's weeds, we're not, we're not killing the weeds in the street, and it's making our community look pretty bad. When Gary Beckler was here and Dave Daley, they sprayed the streets all the time and they kept the weeds out.
Okay.
And I think that's something that should be brought up.
All right.
Number two, I've talked with Ed about this, and I still complain, that grass pile we have out there, you go out and empty grass, and it stinks, and it's with you all day long, and that should be empty a lot faster, and I've talked with him, but that truck sat out there for five days, and nothing's been done. Then one other thing, I know, our hour's six to two, I think it should be seven to four or eight to five. Six to two's ridiculous. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Phil.
No, I won't say anymore.
All right.
I guess I may also go, who else wants to go?
Nope, go ahead.
Um, so I had something just popped to me, as people were asking twice, figured out to help comment, about the, um, ball fields and the bathrooms, and so um, felt like they were they were clean during the tournament, and people were happy to bring their own toilet paper from home. Um, so I just, on my way back through town, I just crewed over there to see them, I didn't realize that we had two toilets in that whole thing, so I understand why it's a enter a desire to expand that thing, but it was dirty, and there was no toilet paper, but there was, um, hand sanitizer bowl, so I just peeked in, it's just today, and, um, but it's a concern, especially when we do do tournaments and that kind of stuff, that was one of the concerns, we'll be able to, I think it represents the town, and I don't know if, I know at one point we mentioned having porta potties or something out there or additional, I asked for some solutions, what they thought we should do, um, obviously, we have this, we don't own the property, we lease the property thing that we're we're discussing, so, um, some of that was some of my things about what we could spend on, that I shared, that's something we're looking into, I wasn't sure we could open up the fair area for bathrooms, but then somebody has to maintain those, I was trying to come up with solutions that maybe we we could do, but I, if people are bringing their own toilet paper from home, so people can have toilet paper to use, I mean, and and one of the things that actually was offered was they, uh, people said that they could, felt like they'd get a bunch of volunteers that could come out and clean the place, and and that's free, and people care about the community, and, um, if it, if that's what needs to happen, if, you know, if somebody comes before tournaments, we have community members coming to clean the bathrooms and bring their toilet paper, um, and and clean the bathrooms, I think that's, you know, people really care about it, until there, what I, what the point is, there's some students, they also offer, so I thought, very reasonable solution.
That's, yep, that's good. All right.
I guess on that, I'm curious, we had like a lot of young employees this season for Apply for Lifeguard, and we have new regulations regarding hours that they can work depending on their age, I'm wondering if we've considered for the city, given that we're now down an employee, the summer months are definitely more difficult for the city with waste removal, weed cleanup, bathrooms, can we think about some opportunities for part-time employment that are not lifeguard or necessarily sports related, that our young kids might might wanna be a part of job shadowing our community workers? If that's something they might be interested in returning to the community to participate in.
Yeah, yeah, so that that is thinking outside the box, yeah.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
I just think, like, local jobs are tough for young kids, I think that's something that is not necessarily high skill need, but it is hours and time and commitment and pay that we obviously struggle to to find full-time
Mm-hmm.
employment, so maybe in the summer, we can consider some part-time opportunities for younger employees to help with some of the summer work, just an idea, not yet.
Okay.
Yep, wanna look into that?
Okay, thank you.
Oh, can I ask what the fence is out there, I can't remember, what's, is that gonna place the back fence, this one's just sitting out there?
What's that?
The fence is laying on the ground out there, is that gonna place the back fence, I can't remember what it's for.
No, the fence, the remainder of that fence will be used to replace the fence that's curling on the northeast field.
Okay, and that's after the ball season, is that the plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
We won't get to that this fall season.
No, I, well, it's kinda hard, you know, our fence up in the middle ball season, I I get that.
Yeah.
I just.
And we're down a man too, so.
Yeah, exactly, I just, I just saw it and just, verification.
Or one.
And maybe we're not too late yet for summer help, part-time, I don't know, hopefully that happens.
I I.
Yep, that's just probably a comment, so you can take it for thought and.
So, we did, I actually am researching that.
Okay.
Um, I asked, Erica brought it to my attention that actually he could probably twist a couple of football players' hands to kind of do some of that work. Um, so he is, he is going to do that, pipe it too late now, but I, there there is, he did bring that to my attention, I'm very thankful for a solution.
I think there's also, I mean, honestly, there's potential for students around the year who are not necessarily participating in sports or pool activities that might be looking for employment opportunities, like, we just don't have a lot of part-time stuff necessarily with the city, and I think we don't typically with part-time, we don't offer benefits, um, which is not a problem for a student who's covered under their parents, um, and I think jobs in the community are always a good opportunity, especially some of those trades that they may return back to the community to do.
And I'll, I'll, I'll finish up what I was, what I was researching on that front. Um, one of the snags we're kinda running to is that you have that class O hamburger license, a driver's license. Um, and they can't go from site to site, so if they're just working at the park, it's it's fine, but I I I can't call them and say, hey, can you go to Ogallala and do this?
Yeah, and that's fine, I mean, to have them more task-oriented for a couple hours a day or whatever.
That's just a logistical thing I gotta work through.
Yeah, yeah.
What about internships at high school, cause we did that with other jobs, I mean, I mean, we didn't even have a paid, I gave you a paid internship, it was my res-keeper internship. You know, so there's not, there's maybe some opportunities there, you know, for, cause there are always like more internships.
Yeah, they are.
Be good for getting a lot of the city government, maybe the city work.
Yeah. Not a bad idea.
All right.
Good.
Saying. Yeah.
So there is some paper down there, it is a concession stand, all is that, I don't have to do, we went to the concession stand and said, hey, if those restrooms are booked, you would have been.
Do we have a sign that says?
There's not, I mean, there was, I went there, I just, I went there today and there was none, in both of them, I mean, it's a lot, and and there was, and there was tracks on the ground.
I wouldn't, I would not. Maybe if we just have a sign that says, if this restroom needs attention, please notify us.
Yeah, that'd be a good, you know, come to come to the concession stand, cause I wouldn't just like think, well, never think that's city.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's.
I think you know, the survey, I know, it's, it's, we went here, we went there, we went at the park, that was.
Sure. But they also offer volunteer work, so I thought that was.
I mean, with the.
Yeah. There's a lot of solutions.
There's a lot of good solutions with the.
Yeah, and and I know we've done, I participated in a couple cleanups at the ball field in the past, but I know then you get Jeff involved and, I mean, because insurance things, sometimes there's that to consider, so.
Do you need assistance or anything, cause we can probably, you know, put the tree board at the park, so it just needs to be, just just needs to be the parking lot support needs to be there.
Yeah, yeah.
Or sure, but.
Yeah, we, it's not different, it's just a sugar dish more.
Okay.
It's actually not a bad idea, especially this time of year, to just do like a home park cleanup day mid, mid-season.
I think a lot of people would show up, and parents would show up, they'd be big to help, I think people, it sounds like people wanna help, they just don't wanna get, you know, like, for like a man or not supposed to or whatever, you know?
Right, right.
Good brainstorming. Unless they, is there, I've not noticed, um, any, no smoking, no drugs, no, oh, that type of signage at the pool. I know we don't allow it, but I haven't seen any signage, so I wonder if that's something we should maybe consider just posting? So that it's there in case of any invasion.
Yeah.
What, what, you think there's no consequences?
I, honestly, it's surprising, that there's not a state in Nebraska that's swimming pool required.
It's not, you know, I, and I was like, I know it's not allowed, but I don't think I've seen a sign, so, just.
Yep.
So I go to the parking lot? Wait, I would imagine.
Park, that's cool property.
I mean, they can't be like just smoking right next to the parking lot, right?
Well, in the bathrooms.
But they can in the park, so.
Ah, yeah, that's fine, yeah.
But they can't smoke in the bathrooms.
You go smoke in the grass?
Yeah, they have to go in the grass.
Gotcha, okay.
I mean, if they wanted to go sit in the car in the parking lot, so I think it would.
Their private property, yeah, their car's private property, yeah, yeah.
But I think at least on the building itself, the grounds.
Signs are so pretty, so, you know, thanks.
All good.
I'm keeping Travis gameplay employed right now.
Yeah, that's good, very good.
All right, any more public comment, like, public for ourselves, Andrea? Terry? I think we're good, all right, unfinished business, action in discussion on Resolution twenty-four oh five oh three, a resolution for the city of Grant to adopt the swimming pool personnel manual, and a further we have all other resolutions, a part resolution, and a part grant.
I know it's not explained, but I tried to get the yellow highlights.
I like it, I was gonna say thank you for the highlight.
You need to see where, where the changes were made, double check with Todd, that, yes, I worded stuff appropriately. I removed dogs, or.
Yeah, I think it was no dogs.
No dogs, sorry, they're driving now.
They're gonna decide one now, too, right?
So I'm trying to capture what I thought I heard, I'm trying to get inside the comments, so. Two minds better than one. I don't know if I was right, fast enough.
I would make the motion to approve Resolution twenty-four oh five oh three, uh, resolution for the city of Grant to formally adopt the swimming pool personnel manual.
Second. Camera moved, Andrea's second to approve Resolution twenty-four oh five oh three, adopting the Grant's swimming pool personnel manual. Any discussion?
I I would like to ask for some feedback, um, for for those of you who have lap swim, since we last talked about this, has there been any changes? Are the lanes available, um?
I have been since we talked.
No, one day, right after the meeting, it was fixed, but it has not been since.
Okay, and there are lap swimmers up there, swimming?
Yeah, actually, yesterday it was full, so, uh, what did work out really well is the lifeguards noticed that it that it was full, um, and removed, completely removed the the slide pole that sits in the middle, and then the barricades, um, and then we did have an on-duty lifeguard who was giving lessons, who asked the lane swimmers, we've got a swimmer who would like to go down the big slide, at the end of his lesson, is that okay with you? So that all worked really well, but there were no, no lanes up during the swimwear.
And I, it's prior to implementation of this, obviously.
Exactly, yeah. Exactly, yeah.
And I, I told Brittany and I, and she said, well, we will, were they at least pulled over to the deep end, where the lane ropes by the deep end?
No.
Okay.
I think the operators, from my questioning of some staff, I think the operators are aware of the rule, but I'm not sure it's like widely publicized for the rest of the time yet, so.
It will be now. It will be now when they assign it, so. Thank you.
And is there a meeting for them to like go through the manual so that they know what it is?
Yeah, so I, we'll talk with Brittany and see what the, so we can try and hit all the kids at once and not have sixteen hundred meetings.
Yeah.
Where there's only five on a shift and some of them only work three days a month.
Yeah.
Um, so, we will, we will coordinate, I will have for a set of time, we have all, as many employees as we can get there, so we don't have to have multiple meetings. I know people are busy, vacations, camps.
And she might have to have, you know, three or four sessions.
And we, if we have to have three or four, that's fine, I just want with five and then five and then five and then five, yeah.
Hopefully, the remainder of this week gives a good opportunity if we're able to pass it, because most of them are there for instruction.
Yeah.
Has Brittany seen this? I'm assuming she has.
Yes.
Okay, my question.
Okay, so Kimberly moved, Andrea second, any more discussion? Terri, how do you go?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Motion clear. Thank you very much. Good discussion. Alright, action and discussion on approval of the Bishop's subdivision preliminary plat. So this is just the preliminary, so there are changes to be made, I'm assuming?
Between now and the final plat, public hearing with the planning commission, yes.
Okay.
Which is yet to be scheduled, so I'll have to get the changes back from Mr. Dickinson, uh, before we move forward with final plating.
And then for the city-owned property or CRA-owned property, what is, what is the final process as far as like their proposal for house size? Or what type of structure to place in that space?
So. So the CREs are the last step after they approve the bid for construction. Their next step will be, uh, pricing of square, pricing per square foot.
Okay.
Um, and then covenants, and that's where that will fall into place, is covenants.
And that is?
Like they can't have a mobile home, um.
Kinda like a HOA or?
It's similar to, similar to the language of an HOA, yes.
So then they would make a recommendation for the covenants to the city council for final approval, or they?
No, they're, this is their property, yeah, they draw that home.
They draw that up? Okay.
This, the next step for you guys will be approval of the final plat.
Which is really just the layout, it is not price per square footage?
No, no, it's, it's just confirming that yes, this is the layout, and it will stay this way, there are no alterations from this point forward.
Okay.
Okay, good. And it blends with the tip of things with some of that, so.
I move to set action, um, on approval of the Bishop's subdivision preliminary plat.
Second. Sam, move, Terri second to accept the, uh, approval of the Bishop's subdivision preliminary plat, any more discussion? I, I did have one thing. Uh, that just occurred to me, sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know when we put the water mains in, that the, the flow of the water changed to come into the house because they were smaller frame? You, you guys know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
So like right now, like I had to change all my sprinklers because it, the water pressure, it wasn't water pressure, they said it was something else, it was.
Yeah, the water pressure hasn't changed.
Our, our pressure's constant at fifty-five PSI.
Right, but I still had to change my sprinklers, like, if I run my, my wash machine, I can't run my sprinklers, where before the water meters, I could do both. Are we, we're not gonna, that, put that in this new, we're, we're gonna fix that and put in a new subdivision.
That'll be the homeowner's decision as to whether or not they want a three-quarter inch line or a one-inch line.
So that's what it is, is the three.
Yeah, and we, we will not decide that, that's the homeowner's decision on their service line.
It's lines and fittings and things, a lot of people didn't notice any change.
I noticed a ton of change.
So, I mean, it just, it just kinda depended on, I think. How things were, so.
So that's the homeowner's decision on what's cost benefit for them, obviously, we're gonna tell them we have a ten-inch water main, it's at fifty-five PSI, and.
Okay.
So where we build our main, we have some control over the flow behind that and the flow in front of that?
The only control we have is over the PSI, which is fifty-five, we don't have control over anything else other than pipe size.
Right, so I guess what I'm saying is if a homeowner decides to do a larger pipe size.
Hmm.
We are still controlling PSI at the main.
Yep.
I guess that's as much as we can, right, say.
And we're gonna, and we're gonna be, if they, they put a bigger pipe, then they're gonna pay a lot more for one.
I experienced it as well. Yes.
Hmm, correct.
So if they wanna.
A one-inch.
They think they need an inch and a half or a two-inch or whatever reason, which you don't, um, they're gonna pay for the.
And they're gonna pay the majority.
The excess of your charge and.
And they're gonna pay forever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hmm, hmm. Okay.
Or until they realize that they only needed a one-inch.
Yeah, so they redo it.
But we will have that available, obviously, when, when someone purchases a property, they ask about, okay, well, what's, what's the water main size?
Size.
What's all of that, so they'll know that, yes, we're putting in, we have one-inch meters available, so we move you to put a one-inch service line in.
Mm-hmm.
Um, not narrow it down to three-quarters, but we also understand that that is the homeowner's, uh, or lot owner's prerogative. If they want a three-quarter inch, because they're gonna save a thousand bucks or something, so.
I wouldn't recommend it.
Put in a one-inch, we have to do it.
Yeah, alright, I'm sorry, okay, so, um, my motion, uh, any more discussion now that I have more discussion? Andrea, how do you go?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Alright, motion clear. Alright, thank you guys for the, the good questions. Um, action and discussion on interlocal agreement for law enforcement services between Perkins County and the City of Grant, I'm so thankful that we have this.
Uh, no changes here, as well as, uh, they did not ask for an increase in their contractual price, so.
Very nice. So glad you don't have to find additional employees and equipment. Can't say that off.
Right, for law enforcement, we don't have either.
Yes. Yes, yeah.
You don't manage cats though, I thought it was kinda funny.
What's that?
I was about to read through it. You don't manage cats, my.
I did find some documents if you're curious about the.
Who does?
No one manages. Yeah, like, there was a grant that placed.
There was.
There was a what?
There was a grant, police department at one time.
Hmm.
I'm, Jim might remember, John Mathles, school chief. City mayor, mayor, other people.
Wow, alright, that's exactly right.
For a local police department, like a city police department, we wouldn't be able to afford it.
Yeah.
Hey, Bieber.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there was a foster, Clyde Addison, that was all city police.
Wow.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm really thankful for.
That was back in the day when Jim was a kid.
Policing all three hundred of you. Just kidding, just kidding. Um, to accept action on near local agreement for the law enforcement services between Perkins County and the City of Grant.
Second. Terri moved, Kimberly second, that we accept the inner local agreement between law enforcement services between Perkins County and the City of Grant, any discussion?
Do we have to authorize the mayor's side?
Oh, yeah, good question.
Yes. And authorize the mayor's side.
Okay, Terri says authorize the mayor's side.
I accept that change.
Alright, Kimberly second, any more discussion? Good catch. Terri, how do you go?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrew, six day. Motion clear. Alright, action and discussion on resolution twenty-four oh six oh one, resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Grant, accepting the fair parade duties. And this is so we can have a parade.
We accept the liability risk of the parade.
Right. Otherwise, we can't have a parade.
Because they can have a parade, just not down State Highway.
Okay, right, we would have to go like, kids around in a different way. Yeah, you're right, we could, we could have a parade without.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-four oh six oh one, um, a resolution for the city of Grant to accept the fair parade duties.
Second. Kimberly moved, Terri second, that we accept resolution twenty-four oh six oh one, accepting the fair parade duties, any discussion? Andrea, how do you go?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion clear. Thank you guys. Yeah, I, I think we would be unpopular if we put the fair parade six I in here, Tim.
Yeah, I agree.
Discussion on employee compensation, this is just getting ready for, um, budget season, which we all know kinda starts now. Um, looking at, at numbers, and it would be the COLA and then also comparable community average adjustment, um, it has proposed for us.
Yeah, I hope this form works well, I think we've used this in the past, uh, Sam gave me good feedback, um, he wants to see the numbers, what's the bottom line, what's the effect? How much more, so, I tried to include that in there.
Thank you.
A couple of, a couple of changes we're looking at, and this'll come up more, you know, obviously, I told you we're having some difficulties in that public, third public works position is primarily a refuse truck, truck driver. And, uh, and this is charged me with looking at some alternatives there and giving some good solutions. So, we're, we're looking at, at shaking things up a little bit and adding some more responsibility to one individual and splitting out some of the departments, so it's not all on one person. Um, that's sort of the major changes there, um, more to come, we're researching now, but, the, the, do we wanna talk about contracting our trash service in the future? Um, I obviously need to get a bunch of numbers together, and I am working on that, um, I'm hopeful that we can just find someone and not have to worry about that.
Yeah, this primarily comes, and, and this was, I think, um, an idea that after talking to some of the council members to contract out the trash, since we can't find help. Um, we still have to keep that trash moving.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and so, you know, if we can't find an employee, we, we need to seriously look into about contracting that out, even though I, as a personal home resident, wouldn't appreciate it, but I like my trash picked up, so.
Obviously, there's a lot more balls in motion for that one, so.
Yeah.
Um, and then, yeah, just, just the caveat there, that we would, we would still need that third individual, I mean, they do more than drive the trash truck.
Right.
There's, there's other duties that they could be doing, um, that should, they should be doing, um, you know, that we, we are falling behind on, you know, on the streets and, and. I mean, we have sewers that we like to clean in between Johnson's Cameran cleaning, um, so, yeah, there's, there's, there's some things that we need to get back on top of. And a third employee would certainly help.
We're right in there. Right.
Um, but, uh, but yeah, so, just sort of your first look there, and I did include that silo comparison that you guys had asked for, I thought that was very helpful. Um, as well as the most current, uh, cost of living, which is two point eight percent right now, um, and the bill will come out, I believe, July fifteenth.
And, and, and I appreciate you also, um, including the other benefits that we offer, the holidays, the, uh, vacation days, and, uh, the health insurance, so, so that gives us a better picture of what.
And obviously, we'll know more once we get closer to, uh, what, what we're gonna get from the county as far as, um, their valuation goes, and that'll ultimately determine what, what can we afford. Cause we, I think I heard loud and clear, we don't wanna do the postcards, so.
Yeah.
Right, right.
The AFLAC, is that short-term disability, or is that, cause I saw it, I saw, yeah, so it's short-term?
It's, uh, accidental and, uh.
AFLAC is, uh, each individual chooses what they want, and we're just a pass-through for AFLAC.
Okay, so, who's, are, is the individual paying for that? Yes, the employees pay for that, the employer's not?
Yeah.
Okay, that was my, that was my question, I saw the bill, but we have it on the bills and claims.
Right, because it's a city bill, because we're passing it through the table.
Okay.
It comes out of there.
Okay, cause, okay, okay. I, that was, I went to short-term.
But, they offer short-term disability, long-term, accidental death of dismemberment, and.
It's most, yeah.
It's most all your.
But you, but you as the, we as the employer are not paying for that, you as the employer are choosing by that on your own, okay, that was one thing I, I was, I wasn't sure about, it's like, it's not a benefit we're offering, since even right now, okay.
It's the benefits that employees have, were able to earn through their own uses.
Sure.
So then it's, is it free? Then it's pre-tax deduction.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's the benefit.
Uh, I think life insurance and other things.
And whether facility, other, we use offer the ability to pay that pre-tax?
I think most offer the ability to pay pre-tax to your, whether it's AFLAC, home loan.
Sure.
There's a couple of these, those are the two that come to mind, but.
Well, it's additional benefit, I mean, I know you have to pay for it yourself, but, you know, let's, maybe I have just one more question to ask, see if they offer that.
Yeah, no, and no, I, I will inquire, but it was not on our list.
No, I know, I just saw it today, can you think of it?
Um, the last time that we kind of checked in with our staff, we preferred to have those benefits as opposed to a higher wage without those benefits, right? I know that the buy in the sky is increasing, but the wages and the benefits, but I'm just curious, like, that's not a solution that they would consider a win?
I think that's changed, uh, I, I think the take-home pay right now is, is, is practice is more important, however, at least one of the employees.
And the, and the reason I ask.
Is very appreciative of the benefits themselves, but.
And the reason I ask, I mean, I feel like we're, we are entering a generation of en- employees that are a bit more shortsighted in general. Looking at what is my take-home pay versus what are my benefits, so if we are continuing to try to play the total benefit game, that's fine. But if your potential employee is not playing the same game, we're, we're out of the loop, you know, so I, I wanna make sure. We are competitive in the area that matters right now for potential hires, um, and again, we have like a mix, unfortunately, so it's not necessarily a.
I, I will say that that's changed, I think you're seeing the same thing.
Yeah.
Um, I think in the current economic situation.
Yeah.
Um, it is, it is, what am I taking home because it now costs me four hundred dollars every time I go to the Walmart to buy groceries for two weeks? And it was the three hundred teenagers in home, that's ridiculous.
Yeah.
Um, but, but, I, I don't think that that's a trend that is just, just announced right on the surface, um, we'll, we'll see, we're, we're watching cycle. Can it change? Obviously, yes, it can change, how quickly will it change? Will prices never come back down as quickly as they go up? We know this, um.
No. And they never come back to regular order?
No.
It's housing, housing cost of two-by-fours is a prime example.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it went up and it came back down, but it only came down like here, not like where.
So we, we do have a mixed bag, but I would say that overall, it's the combination of the two that really keep the majority of the employees happy, because, you know, the work-life balance. The, the, the living benefits with the health insurance and a competitive wage, I think it is the total picture to keep our employees healthy and happy, um.
Did we conduct a visit survey on our last?
I'm not, I'm not bad.
Okay.
Okay. I, I do have a request coming from myself, um, I would ask the council members to do an additional fair pay to Judy. Consider, um, up to a dollar. And, uh, it's just, um, that, that's my request. I really like who we have here.
Good in here.
I'm gonna do it tomorrow.
Yeah, I can ask.
So a dollar above what's already written on here is a difference?
Correct, correct, and, and, just, just a request, just, and, and the reason being, um, in the last couple years, um, prices just go above and beyond what. Any, like, real world panel person would do. He'd give us out of trouble when it comes to the state up to date with the auditors, but, I mean, she's on the phone making sure that we are where we need to be, I promise people. So, and it was, and it just, it, every year there's more and more, it's not like a couple things here and there, it's like.
And it is, and it just, it, every year there's more and more, it's not like a couple of things here and there, it's like a. Look what, every year there are more requirements that she has to keep up to date and keep straight and meet the deadlines. That was a request from her.
Why don't you wanna make that effective immediately?
Uh, when we, I mean, we could do, I mean, we, I, I'm presenting it with the, with the, as.
If you have a point, correct.
Yeah, so we go in with our budget discussion, because that's, um, we're just.
Yeah, we're just ready.
Right, right.
Great.
Well, those are my reasons. Um, any other discussion on the employee compensation? As we're going into our, our budget talks. All right, discussion on capital improvements projects, I had asked the library to, to send us their, their budget, um, the projects, they did get it to us, but. It, it was very vague, um, so I'm gonna ask that Ed get a little more firmer, like they said, the carpet may have been replaced about twenty years ago, we would like it replaced. So I need more information, what year was it replaced, approximate cost, you know, kinda like what we have for our other capital outlay projects. So we do have some stuff that the library would like to, that I asked for them to give us. Um, but it, there wasn't enough information there to, to bring here, I don't think, so.
There was no hard, there was no ballpark or estimate ever, so that's why it's just a bullet point in libraries and placeholder. Uh, I will be asking that question tomorrow of them if they have any plans to secure estimates or at least give us a ballpark.
Yeah, and and.
Was that, was that not part of their budget the last couple of cycles?
We have asked the last couple of cycles, yes, and.
I remember too.
Yes, and.
Really, really?
Yeah, I don't know, is it my fault? Sorry, I, I'm.
I thought maybe it was my tonight's.
I know, honestly, I was, I didn't know.
I didn't hear a thing, that's how good my hearing is.
You love it, you just pierced my ears.
No, trust me, I don't know.
Down, down the street freaking out.
Anyways, I thought, I thought flooring or carpet was part of their last few budget cycle line items, so it just has never been able to be done with the budget?
The front circulation desk has been, I, I don't know if I've, I've seen flooring or carpeting on a specific line item, but.
Okay.
Just the circulation desk?
Just the circulation.
Yes, the desk, okay, maybe that's what I was thinking of, okay, okay.
It's been on there.
I couldn't.
So this, so just be for, we think that the major.
Now, they did have hard numbers on the circulation desk, but I know they were also researching additional. Like, in the library foundation fund, some of that, so they also didn't have a hard number on that either, cause that's, was it twenty? It was a lot of money.
And I know they did carpet, I think, was it in the community room, since I've been here, by the way, or something, but they didn't do the main library then.
I was part of a fundraiser for, for carpet in there, so, I mean, it was why I was on the, um. The foundation board, so I, I know they gotta have a, a year that the carpet was redone because I don't remember.
So the, the complete project from circulation desk, they have a quote for, which is fifteen, six, eight, two, but I, I know they were in talks with how much can the foundation help with, and so. I just need a, just like we said, just need a little more, I have pretty good numbers for us and our stuff, you know, current as of today, it doesn't mean it's what, what it's gonna be when it shifts, because.
Right.
It changes every two weeks, but that's, you know, that was, that was kinda what we were waiting on for, for capital improvements, and I think lighting, they were, they wanted to do some additional lighting upgrades. And I know the tile was cracked over by the bathrooms, um, so, so yeah, some stuff that, uh, it would be nice just to have a list from them.
Mm-hmm.
But to know what, I mean, none of us, I'm.
Did we, did we send them like this list to say, for example, this is kind of the format we're looking for, this is how we're considering those items, it might be helpful for that.
That, that's a good idea, yeah.
I just asked for ballpark, ballpark.
Ballpark?
Ballpark. Frank, ballpark, Frank, uh, I, I must want a hot dog right now. I just asked for ballpark numbers, uh, for estimates if they could be included in the, only estimate they have was on the circulation desk.
Okay.
Maybe give them a list, say we needed to look like this.
Write on this page, these pages. Yeah.
I'll just take a copy with me tomorrow.
Perfect, and, and also, if it, if it could be, um, like, some, cause there was quite a bit, it was a long list, so, but also could be prioritized. You know, like, kinda like a one in six.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That's good.
Yeah, our list could be a real long, but it's. Four items per department or whatever, like, yeah, I mean.
Right, right, I, 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 I mean, cause other departments, we, you know, we say this year we're gonna do this, this year, and then next year we're gonna do this, so, I, I mean. If, if we can have some kind of priority, that would be great.
Can I take a copy over? I'll, I'll make sure that that's mentioned, so you can narrow down your.
Perfect. Okay, all right, as far as the capital outline budget consideration, we have the airport.
Big project there would be the food hangar rehab construction, actually, this year we're doing, we're doing the engineering and planning study, uh, which you guys saw in the bills and claims there. Um, we will get reimbursement from that, that's a grant, so it's still the same process there for the airport. Hey, we're gonna use arcifos, it's gonna happen, we have to actually. There's no more, there's no more pushing that one, otherwise we lose them, so.
Anita and I are trying to get a time put together, we're trying to use utilities and stuff, we may not hit the full entire mark on it for the airports, but.
And then the arbit's, the arbit itself, um, yeah, we're gonna use those ones too. So, uh, that, that is an interest-bearing account, so it's actually a little bit more than that.
Yes.
Um. Cemetery, um, this, this is one of those items that, uh, doesn't necess, it's not, uh, needed now, necessi- necessi-
Necessity?
Necessity, necessarily, thank you, um, however, I've been in talk with Mr. Kirkpatrick and, uh, he said if you wanna do it, get it, get it done, so.
It'll be, yeah.
I don't know if that makes.
It's gonna be more expensive next year and next year and next year, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, CRA, obviously, that's, that's our number, well, well, that number will change once we have the actual bids, and so.
Right.
Um, and so may the economic development alone, so on and so forth. Um, electric, um, we're still in the process of converting our mercury bulbs to LED on the side streets. Uh, transformers, that's just a standard order, we've got, we're, you know, two or three transformers every year, and then they take a year to get here.
Right.
Um, and I'm hoping that supply chain can speed up a little bit, transformers are really forever and today. And Randy Schmidt can attest to that.
Yes, he complains about it often.
Address signage on the brick home, I, I think I'm probably actually just gonna write, that was kinda one of those things I thought might look cool, but I think I'm probably, it's probably gonna come off of there. My vision there was to have three forty-two central on the big corner posts on either side, nice, nice big, you know, like the city brand is, across the top. It's not a need, it's not a need, um, the office computer is, if, I, I've, I, I must have bought the worst.
Just because it.
Office computer in the world, so.
It turns off randomly on you, that's a problem?
Yeah. Um, it is a problem, actually, I've gotten really good at saving every two seconds, I just go save, save, save. Replacement in the council chairs, I'd like to not only replace the one that's faulty, but start to phase out the other ones too. Um, they're expensive, they're not cheap, I was, you know, I was, I was blown away by how expensive those chairs are. Um, just for a piece of metal and some foam and thick leather, they're about a thousand dollars a pop, so.
Well, we don't need to.
They don't need to be this fancy.
When we're in them.
Sorry, maybe I'm speaking from the group, like, I agree. We're in them twice a month, that's not where I would choose to spend taxpayer.
Well, we don't, and, and again, these are, and, these, mine are actually in order.
I'd actually, I would update that to just say on hold.
Okay.
I'm fine, I'm fine.
We share the chair.
We'll share the.
Let's keep it, right?
Just move it, every meeting it moves down one spot.
You wanna know my rotation?
Yeah.
So I, I take that chair and I move it over here and everything else slides in.
He does it already.
Perfect.
So, now, that just depends, depends on who had the meeting before you, so cemetery board met before you, and they're like, oh, I don't want this chair, and then they moved it, now it's out of rotation, so. Um, remainder of lottery funds, I'll have an accurate update on that, once we get closer to budget time, but again, remember, there's no incoming annual funds for that, but.
When it's gone.
We also, we didn't have a whole lot of requests, so.
Yeah.
Um, park and rec, uh, removing and replacing the wood planks with aluminum planks on the benches, um, this is an ongoing project, I'm hoping this is the last phase of that project.
Now, does this include the ones in front of the bench shelter?
Bench shelter and the ones in front of the tennis court and the ones out of the park, at the ball fields as well. I told you earlier that Danielle Coning, uh, Coning Craft Construction is going to be doing our interior painting on the bench shelter. Um, she's also going to be giving me some numbers on renovating the benches, uh.
Oh, good.
Turns out that was not paint on there, it's actually, it's more of a rubberized coating.
We painted them.
That's on there, that's what I told her.
We've painted them multiple times, so.
And it now has like a.
I've painted them once.
So, you know, you're gonna have lots of legs, so it's like a rubber coating on them. Um, that, that's a placeholder, um, it's a ballpark figure that for that, it's, it's needed, it's needed. Um, basketball court and tennis court resurfacing and fence, um, with everything we did at the ball fields, we were not gonna get the fence down at the tennis court this year, but we will get that done next year.
Okay, good.
Um, again, that's needed. Ball field restroom renovations are placeholder here, I know we talked a lot about this and, and maybe not doing the new restrooms. Um, and I heard you loud and clear on the renovations, you know, let's, let's get a fresh coat of paint, let's clean up the floors, maybe new toilets in there. Um, out exterior paint, uh, you know, a nice, nice metal roof on there. So, that's kinda where I started with and what I thought maybe we, we could put into it when it was all said and done, um, I think it would probably be less than that, honestly. Um, but that was a good starting point, uh, based on those ideas, as well as the possible purchase of, uh, maybe some board jobs.
Yeah.
So, uh, just a good placeholder for that, um, another pla- placeholder here, uh, and you notice that the top it says in future, in future. Um, so new playground to replace the wooden structure, I think I mentioned this before, I've actually talked to Don Softly and he's also in agreement that it has served its best life. And if you don't know, that was a donation from the Softly family, uh. And, and, uh, a very gracious donation, I'm very appreciative of that donation, but it's, it's served its best life and I know the insurance has said, chimed in a time or two on that one, so. We're doing our best to mitigate the, the slivers and the, and, and the missing bolts and all of that, trying to put hardware in.
I wonder if it's time to just take it down.
And that might be our first step, is actually the actual removal, um, and then.
I think it's something to get fundraised for too, I think.
And, and they do have the, like, like, similar to what we did at the, uh, ball fields, you know, with the Jade donation, she was able to get, uh. Fifty percent matching, so not a hundred, one to one.
Sure.
A two to one match on that, so we were able to capital, she was able to capitalize on that and get a bigger structure for less money. And to put that in a reference, once it actually goes into place, um, we're, we're hoping before fair, but there was no guarantees there either. Um, we're at the whim of, of Creative Sites and their installation company, um, but once you guys see it, uh, that was, that's a sixty thousand dollar structure. So, I'm gonna kinda gauge off of that where we're, where we need to be for that replacement of that, it'll be a toddler structure, cause that's kinda what it was, it's a younger age. Structure, not a big kid's, you know, the twenty-four foot slide wraps around, so.
I think we need a pirate one.
That's the third structure though, right, there are three, there are three independent.
Pirate.
Well, because that's the one, yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, it's the one that has like this rickety bridge. My girls pretended, my girls pretended it was a pirate ship. And they, that was their favorite one, and they were there when that other one was like brand new.
Well, then, you're in luck, because Creative Sites can do basically anything you want, fire engine, beach scene, pirate, you name it, they can.
Pirate, we need, we need pirates, right by the boy.
You, you, you name it, they have all kinds of designs with all kinds of themes.
Okay, I like pirate.
Um, and then the ball field area presence, obviously.
Yeah, with my splash pad though.
I have a question mark there, um.
Doesn't even have it on the list.
Until I know, it's not.
I must be missing it.
You're missing.
That's my dream, my dream is a splash pad, you, you gotta put that like in a, like a, like the dream.
It has filed all of its own.
It's a round file.
It's not the eighty-six yet, not in eighty-six.
I mean, are we sure? It's not here, it's not here, that's why I'm just saying.
Uh, hopefully I have some firm numbers of whether or not the ball field, if they wanna gift us, purchase it or, or whatever.
But it. But that does just bring a point, like, do we want three independent play structures at the park, or if we're gonna spend some money, what do we put there? But I do think phase one is taking down.
Yeah.
The splitter, the splitter giver, as I like to call it.
Yes.
Well, and I like the idea of, you know, streets reset, pretty, see what they want, you know, I mean, cause I think splash pad would be fun, with the pirate ship, the, you know, thing. If they wanna help pay for it, I mean, you know, if they wanna fundraise for it. Sure.
Right, I mean, if that's, well, cause my concern is, and, and this is just coming from someone who never got to the pool, so we can't afford it. And I know there are plenty of people in town who can't go to the pool.
Yeah.
Not because.
Yeah.
They don't want to, it's because they can't afford the pool.
Yeah.
And I was one of those families growing up and a splash pad.
Would be cool.
Would be cool, plus it's, it can be open a little longer than.
Yeah.
Than a pool, and it could just be a, a small, small pirate themed splash pad.
Well, the good news is a lot of communities have splash pads around us, so I have plenty of data to draw from, so.
Yeah, good, good.
Yeah.
Um, and then sewer, um, obviously we're talking about the new subdivision there, and then the sewer main cameran cleaning, they had a couple more thousand there, as their cost had increased. This last year, so, um, and then you'll see a new one on there, so, I am planning for the replacement of one of our pickups, if we wanna use the salt spreader. Um, we're gonna need a, a bigger pickup, I do not think it needs to be a new pickup, because it does not, it's not a pickup that gets used on a daily basis. Um, therefore, hence you see the word used in there, and I haven't, I already have someone on the hook, if you seen the pickup hanging out by Woody's or not, but. Um, I have contacted them and told them that we are very interested and do not sell that pickup, so.
I definitely think we need a salt spreader, yeah, I, I mean, not every year, hopefully, but yeah.
So, just something to think about there, and we split that between three departments, cause it's not just specifically for sewer streets or whatever, but we would outfit it with good tools in the event that we needed to have two. Pickups available for that purpose, and we could, it would also house the mosquito fogger as well, so that'd be the other main use for it. Uh, which, this Friday gets recertified, so we can start that season.
Yay.
My favorite season. Um, crack salt, cracks, crack salt, um, crack ceiling and asphalt patching, I shouldn't put those two words together. Um, that's our normal allotment there, um, intersection improvement at six and Lincoln is next on our list, uh, but we will obviously talk about that when we talk about one and six. I know that was sort of the, um, logical place to go there, um, and that's probably the next worst intersection to improve. Um, that's the one that was rise standing most of the winter and right by Jesse's and Michael Ferg's, that, that intersection. Um, curb and gutter improvements, just standard in there, sidewalk improvements, I talked to you about the sidewalk plan, I haven't started the survey yet, cause I don't have a map yet back from TC Engineering. Uh, once I do, then we'll talk about that survey, the public survey again for sidewalk improvements and gauge the public's, uh, sort of what they wanna see there. Store green, cleaning and cameran, this is gonna be an addition here, we're gonna do, we started it this year, uh, and we're gonna continue that. There's a lot of sediment, our store greens, it needs to be cleaned out, we're gonna continue working on clearing the section, or what we do is we give them, we say, okay, you have seventeen thousand dollars. Buy, they charge us an hour rate, and that's how far we can get, and so, and usually we try and figure the stopping point, so it's not the middle of the law, it depends on the pay over, the learning, the other pay, so. Uh, then obviously the one for pickup there, waste dumpsters, and add a little bit more there too, because some of the sale has gone up. Maybe take that out entirely, depending on the later conversation, so.
Uh, I wanna put some on a wish list too, you can, you can circle file it with the mayor's stuff if you want, but I wasn't sure whether on the street or electrical. But, uh, second, Adams to Adams, Adams lumber to Adams Bay, just that we all did the whole street and now we have those big wires that go over the top, I just think, I. I personally don't like the sideline of it, because it's just right in the middle, what would it cost to bore that under, just, just leave those there and then just drop the lines underneath? And then we don't, wouldn't have to worry about anything hitting those lines coming through here, anything going down our main street, um, it was, it would clear the whole thing, and so that. Um it was, it would clear the whole thing, and so that that's my wish list, is is to just, is bore that down.
I don't wanna circle eighty-six it, but I'm gonna, uh so those are transmission lines, they cannot be buried. Um.
That's what I went here.
I'm sorry. Um and that's the reason they were not done when we, we would've done them when we did the project.
Okay. Okay.
But they are, they are high voltage transmission line, uh so they're.
Just bury deeper.
Oh, Randy. Oh, Randy.
Okay, get me done, all right.
I apologize, I would've done it.
Okay.
Cause I think I.
You agree, all right.
Same thing, I thought, doing this, we're right here, and there's a, there's a high voltage transmission line out there.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Everything else was what they called a secondary line, so it's basically just carrying another type. It's not carrying.
But they buried that, they buried the wind, now, it's not, out in county, they buried buried the line.
Eight hundred K B.
They buried it there, just up top and down below at the county, they buried that.
We're, we're talking about the the line, the main line.
I was told by the rest of you. Okay.
Interesting. I'm not blowing up the city, I'm just, I'm not, I'm just.
Now, so we did have, we have a, we did keep back a few holes. Um obviously we wanna have on hand, if something happened, accidents happen, we replace them. Um but we will continue like we did here. And do another street next year, and another street, another street, side streets going south.
Got you, okay.
With the new lines, so.
All right.
Uh and then on water there, um obviously keeping that on your radar, I think you guys have seen that a hundred times now, um and then the watering, and a third, the use figure there. So definitely have the ordinary, a good place to start there, it is, obviously these numbers can fluctuate and change uh minimally, I hope, with the ballpark figure that comes so far, so.
Do you wanna research that, the removal of that? Ricky, I know.
Yeah, yeah, I can give you, with someone who specializes in that.
Yeah. I mean, cause it probably costs more and labor and the whole to the dump, but.
And insurance.
Yeah, insurance, yeah.
And when I was a grand school, we had, we needed three years, so we went splash pads a lot, we were, we'd run around screaming, we'd have heavy sound, and it's great.
Yeah. Yep, yep.
So.
Yeah.
There's that thing. And it's water, it's over handled, it's still really.
Yeah.
So there, there.
Right. So it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you, you get two, you get two options of that, the recirculated option, where you recirculates the water somewhat, like the pool has a gutter system.
Yeah.
Um or you have the dump it losing system, so that just runs, it's, you're basically just running water onto the ground.
Yeah.
And you lose it, you don't recapture it.
I think, I think that when we looked at it before, and this was, Martin, the, the recirculating added like twenty or twenty-five thousand.
They're more expensive than that, I don't know how much now.
But they clean them, right, it's like chlorine and that kinda stuff, it's like, I mean, cause you know, little kids don't, people get excited, it's not bad, I'm saying.
Recirculation system would happen, but if it is a recirculating system, then it would happen before.
Yeah, okay.
Cause it's a dump it, lose it, when it was right in the storm.
Is dump it and lose it, is there any way to recapture that from the park system, the park system?
Pretty, pretty, what are you gonna say?
Yeah, the water.
Stick up some plain water signs?
Yeah.
That's probably a bigger, trying to.
No, not unless you wanna put in a wastewater treatment plant.
I was excited, I don't think, well, I got you.
We can start selling energy drinks. I'm just kidding, I'm just.
We do, we sell Celsius, it's a fun tool.
But we're not making money out of it. Anyways, that was not on the agenda moving on.
All right.
Oh, wait, wait, you can, okay, sorry, I wasn't tracking.
You know what I'm saying, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
As I was saying, yeah, we're making money out of it, the the city is.
No, not like that.
So, uh any other ideas that we could put on here, I mean, we, you know, if we can even, it'd be like the dream list? Or a to-do list for Edward.
Um. So once we take the parks down, I mean, one thing we haven't talked about is, there's not a congruent sidewalk around the park, so like a walking path? There's just the, is it the alley Mayoni that's really missing, or, and then there's like the drive-through? But I wonder, can we use any part of like a green space, walking trail fund to maybe do a walking trail in the park?
And that's, that's part of the charge that put to TC Engineering, is identifying those missing areas.
Good, cause there's, so then I wonder if like we take the, if we take the playground down, we have two others, do we look at maybe like a calisthenics something or another there instead of a playground set? That might be incorporated with a walking.
Are those old rock wall, those look like, those things are just like, it looks like they have pipes in that, so it looks like they used to be found or something.
Yeah.
So, so adult structures, like or something.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Just thought.
Wasn't the new one gonna have a climbing wall?
Mm-hmm.
I couldn't remember, cause I know some of the communities have just the regular climbing walls, but a lot of it gets like, it's up to.
Well, just with the new one at the, the, the ball field, so then that's. Gregory, place your owners, we can just think about different ways to spend that money, potentially, what do we not have there?
Right, that's a good idea, something um adult oriented, cause I I remember when I took kids to the park, I would like incorporate my exercise at the park.
Yeah, well, I like watching that or whatever.
There are ones, equipment for that, we saw it when we were at the.
Yeah. Yeah, those like the music people probably do some nice stuff.
Yeah, they do, they have the exercise kind of equipment.
And there's a big, well, semi-big push for that type of equipment, uh as far as what's available for matching.
Okay.
Funds for, for, I think they call it play equi, or uh, I think it's called play equipment.
I know Creative Sites has, cause I remember listening to that.
Yeah.
Tom, Tom, you're good for it about that.
Well, I did, and he was pretty hooked about that, but then he, that died off when he went to the cemetery, so we'll see how things go from there.
Once that's done, we'll do a different project. Anyway, it's my two cents.
That's, that's good, I I'm sure our dream list.
Don't put it in a circular file.
Yeah. I don't even have a circular file, I just put on my never ending list.
What do we do with that rock wall, that's breaking, that circular rock wall, what are we gonna do with that, that's breaking apart?
That's, that's a historical situation, so.
Uh you talking about the planter, or?
I don't know.
There's several, the one that used to be a fountain, the one that used to be a fountain.
Big circular when you walk in.
Northwest of the band.
And then there's the circular one.
Fountain, I can tell it's a fountain, so what, a planter?
No, 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 it's a, it's.
Yeah, by the tennis courts.
Yeah, by tennis courts, and I saw, a bunch of, chunks got knocked out of it, that's wrong.
Yeah. They're both planters.
Okay.
They're both.
So it's gonna turn into a planter?
The actual was a fountain, wasn't it, or something, like the one closer to the pool, that's like on the hill?
From the band shell was a fountain.
You're gonna put like a Ron Reagan statue in the building, or what do we do?
Just the inset one that goes in the hill.
Probably inset one.
Yeah, no, it's.
So there's two planters and a probably inset random thing.
Two planters and uh. Yeah, yeah, those are all.
All of that is historic, though.
Every, every bit of it.
All of the, the stuff that's kinda falling apart is historical, so to fix that, you have to get a person that is qualified, right?
Yep, and they have to be, they have to be registered with the state to work on that specific.
If you're going to restore.
If you're gonna restore it, you don't have to restore, you can remove it and and lose the historical designation.
But you could, you know.
So by law, can we just remove it?
Yeah.
What, what is it?
You can lose, you can remove it, but you're gonna lose the historical designation.
So what's that, what's that lose us?
Yeah.
Just a, just a plaque on the wall?
Nostalgia, uh.
But it's breaking down, I mean, I've got, I mean, it's just falling apart, we can't fix it, you know, I mean.
The people's safety, right.
Yeah.
I mean, I find if it's gonna make, if it's gonna look nice, you can turn it into an old planter, you're gonna redo, you're gonna repurpose the fountain, but if it's such a brick wall or a rock wall that's falling apart, you know?
That's a safety hazard that costs us insurance money.
That's circular, like a splash pad, I'm just, you know.
It's like a splash pad.
That has funny to it, that way you can somewhere.
That's funny to it.
No water.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I, I don't, I think if it's gonna look nice, then we can restore it, but if it's, if it's just gonna fall apart and we can't replace it and we can't fix it, then.
And that.
We need some new design.
Yeah, we, yeah, need some new design.
Yeah, I think that's sort of what we circled as, as the tree board was talking about what to do with that, cause they wanted to put flowers in it, it's not really flower friendly.
Yeah, cause that.
Doug Tatum has been taking care of it, removing the trees that are growing out of it.
Okay.
Um the idea I proposed to them was to, to get some stuff together to present to city council for re, not re, we have to, we have to remove it to do it correctly.
Okay.
To create a, a veterans' memorial there. Something with, you know, someone, you know, pray, soldier on bring me, and something cool there, like that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, your statue.
Oh, okay, still a statue though.
I mean, Imperial just did something very similar to that, it looks very nice, but.
Sure, that's a good idea, I mean, I'd like to.
I mean, it really, really wouldn't have to change the footprint of it, you know, you could still keep the circular aspect of it.
Mm-hmm.
Um and and the remaining sidewalk around it, so I mean, it's, just get it out of place and put back up with good, well, that's right.
I'd like to hear some of what the options are, what could work things and that kinda stuff, that everybody's kinda looking at, you know, I think that's a good, I think that's a good option, like for what the community would like there too, just, you know. We do have, we do have a memorial already on there.
Yeah, we do have one on that, yeah.
So, not that we can't have two, I just.
Yep. Good, good discussion. All right, we're ready to move on to bills and claims, everyone have got a chance to look at bills and claims?
Yes.
Yes.
You wanna note that everyone looked at bills and claims?
Remove to accept bills and claims in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand, five ninety-seven twenty-eight.
Second.
And remove, Kimberly second, that we accept bills and claims in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents, any discussion? Sam, how to go?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carried, we are adjourned at eight thirty-six, thank you, everyone.
Andrew, Steve Connors, the.
Recording stopped.
Cemetery.
I think he is too, yeah, the, the cemetery board has commented that they thought.
He's out of the base on job, and Lisa, check the playground equipment out in the mango, I'm sure it's not a pirate, if you might want to.
Thank you.